701 will call the meeting to order. Dr. Goudna, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which proclaims to stand one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All board members are present. Mr. Board, has public notice been given?
Yes, it has. We are... Yes, it has.
Right. Public comment for policy 0167.3. Anyone wishing to participate in the period of public comment must be a resident of the Richland School District, a parent or legal guardian of an enrolled district student or an enrolled district student. Persons wishing to participate must be physically present at the meeting and must register in advance. A total time allotment of 30 minutes will be given for public comment. Each participant shall be given three minutes to address the board. Speakers are not permitted to make inflammatory comments, use inappropriate language or gestures, attack specific persons, or make a specific person the subject of their remarks. Please see policy 0167.3 for a complete list of requirements and restrictions. If a person is unable to adhere to these rules, they may be directed to end their comments. And I have one here. Mrs. Coleman, any more?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, Lee Van Lande, you have three minutes to address the board.
Dr. Johnson, would you make sure the mic is on or two maybe?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
I know the procedure.
Everybody hear me okay? Are you all set? Okay. I've got a one-page statement I'd like to read. School Board Address dated this date. School boards have been historically elected to represent their districts, voters, and parents. Their duties were all-inclusive. Every aspect of the school's operations were direct concern of each school board member. They were encouraged to participate in as many school activities as possible while absorbing information that would enhance the operation of the entire district. That was the model I've been accustomed to. This fact is what attracted me to run for the school board last year. Having spoken to former school board presidents from other districts confirmed my understanding of this fact, I was surprised to see how restrictive this district has become. School board members are now barred from engaging with district teachers, administrators, and other employees. Since this is now the case, I am here this evening to report on the district condition as a grandparent and voting citizen. On Tuesday, June 3rd, I spent late morning and all afternoon at the Richland Intermediate School. I helped several teachers with students and helped box up books to be stored for the summer months, among other things. It was quite challenging since the weather outside was rainy, damp, still, and hot. I and all teachers, students, and others in the building were all drenched with sweat. One of the classrooms was wet from condensing water on the ceiling. The children were pretty well behaved considering the oppressive conditions in the building in general. I was in the heart of the school district. These very students are the ones we should be focusing on. These are the frontline teachers that we need to value and support in every way possible. When school board members are forced to miss out on this experience, how can they be expected to make the necessary decisions needed to achieve the learning possibilities of our students? Sitting on high in this air-conditioned room does not reflect the true condition of the schools. Without understanding and experiencing firsthand the conditions teachers and students face on a daily basis does not prepare one to make the best decision possible. The Richland School Board is the chain of command. Get into the schools and see for yourself what is really going on in each of our buildings. We owe our voters, parents, students, teachers, and community that much. Respectfully, Lee Van Lande. Thank you.
Thank you. And two reports. District Administrator's Report.
Okay, four things that I would like to point out. First of all, I know we've got some new board members, so the microphones in front, I know that after the last meeting we had a few people say that they couldn't necessarily hear everything. Make sure that when you are speaking, you don't necessarily have to lift it up, but the green light does need to be on. Some of you may choose to have that on the entire time and turn it off if you need to cough or do something like that. Others may turn it on when they want to speak, but please make sure that it is on when you're making a motion and voting just for all of our stakeholders to be able to hear. Second point is that we've got our committee meetings this Wednesday, June 11th. We will do the Buildings and Property that will be here in the IMC starting at 6:00 p.m. Personnel Negotiations and Budget Development will also start at 6:00 p.m. That will be in the conference room down the hallway, room 106. And then Policy and Curriculum will start at 7:00. We believe we can get both of the meetings done in an hour, maybe slightly after, but I think we'll be pretty close to on time. Policy, again, will meet here in the IMC. And then Curriculum Assessment and Public Relations, Marketing and Public Relations will meet in the conference room. So again, both of those second meetings will start at 7:00. So 6:00, 7:00. Okay? Okay, and then two things that I want to make sure that the board and the community is aware of, some good things that are going on here. The Wisconsin Educators, Retired Educators Association, WREA, they had, one of our schools was presented with a winner of one of their awards. The 2025 Challenge Award was awarded to the Richland Center Primary School this year in recognition of its RCPS Book Celebrations for Students project. And so, working with Mrs. Hardy in the primary school, we submitted a video and they were acknowledged at a meeting on May 7th. I wanted to make sure that our board and our public were aware of that. It says that the Richland Center Primary School Book Celebrations for Students is making a difference in many lives and you inspire us. You are an outstanding role model for the educational profession. Through the efforts of the entire school district and community, your project will have a lifelong impact on many individuals. Congratulations. And then it's signed by the WREA Foundation President and Executive Director. So congratulations to the primary school and Mrs. Hardy and the wonderful staff and students at the primary school. And the last thing that I want to make sure that you're aware of is that we also recently were selected as a recipient of one of the Wisconsin School of Recognition Award winners for 2324, and that is the Richland Center Intermediate School. So I have a certificate from the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction. I'll read excerpts from a press release that will be given. The Richland Center Intermediate School received the award in two categories, high progress and high-impact category. This distinction is based on a rigorous set of criteria, including academic performance, measurable progress, and student growth, reducing achievement gaps particularly among students from economically disadvantaged backgrounds. "We are incredibly proud of the students and staff for their commitment to excellence." Lisa Brown, Principal at Richland Center Intermediate School, said, "This recognition reflects the hard work and support of our entire school community, including educators, families, and students." End quote. "The Wisconsin Schools of Recognition Program honors Title I schools that demonstrate success in educating all students, particularly those experiencing poverty." After a pause from the COVID pandemic, DPI resumed the awards for the 2324 school year, celebrating schools that make a lasting impression and impact. So again, congratulations to the Richland Center Intermediate School, Lisa Brown, the staff and students at the intermediate school for that recognition as well. Two outstanding awards for our schools, and I think it's worthy of a round of applause. Any questions from the board on any of those things? And again, if you do, please flip your mics to green. Okay, thank you.
Student Council Report.
I believe that Mr. Doudun? Microphone on green?
Oh, is it working?
Do so.
All right. First off, I just want to apologize for my attire here. Normally, I wouldn't want to dress up and everything, but I got off work around 6:30, so I didn't want to be late or anything. Good afternoon. My name is David Doudun, and I'm here representing the Student Council to share what we've been working on this past month. We've had a busy and exciting few weeks. First, we opened the drive-in movie night, which had a great turnout. We gave students a chance to relax and connect outside of school hours. Not only did council members bond, but they did so with the community as well. We had games set up, which council members played with kids before movies started. It was a fun event for both the council and the community, and we're proud of how smoothly it went. Next, we organized a blood drive, which had a great and strong response. It was a meaningful way for a school to give back and support those in need, and we're very thankful for everyone who participated for helping us reach our goal. We also elected our new Student Council Officers, along with welcoming our new Council Advisor, Mr. Bailing, who is going to help us continue our success and make Student Council involved as possible. I would like to thank Miss Savage for the work she has done over the last couple of years as our former Student Council Advisor. She has poured hours of her own time to make us the best and most successful council we can be, and for that, we are forever thankful. There's a lot of momentum moving forward, and I'm excited about the leadership and energy this new team is bringing. Finally, we've begun planning for homecoming, which is one of our biggest events of the year. From themes to logistics, we're laying the groundwork now to make it something really special for our school and community. Thank you for your time and support. We're looking forward to the rest of the year and everything we can accomplish together. With that being said, I would love to answer any questions and any comments you may have.
Mr. Doudun, could you share who the newly-elected officers are?
So it is me, and this is this position. It's the electorian or something like that, which I am responsible for going to different board meetings. And then we have our new president, Kieran Colver, who has already done a great job within planning everything and getting meetings set up. And then we have Haley Ropere as our, not our executive positions called, but basically as our council accountant, I guess you could say, who's in charge of funds and whatnot. And then we have, who am I forgetting here? I believe that's, I think we have one more. I can definitely check on that on my phone here, but off the top of my head, that's what I can name it.
Vice President?
Vice President, oh, Ellen Hearn's, there you go. Thank you for that. Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Doudun, I know the summer is a little lighter. Do you want to be on the July board meeting, or do you want to?
Yeah, I plan on making any of the board meetings here, so.
Awesome. Yeah, you got it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
The Gifted and Talented Report.
This is a carryover agenda item from the last board meeting. We had some technical difficulties getting the link to work, but hopefully you got a chance to watch the presentation from Jill Plonka. Just some highlights. Our Gifted and Talented program has 180 students in it. This last year, they went on 27 different educational excursions. Ms. Plonka also talked about some of her goals for the future, and then there are several pictures in there as well. I don't see her, and I don't believe she's online, but if the board does have any questions, either Dr. Johnson or myself will get those answers. Does the board have any questions or comments regarding the advanced learners, I think is the program moving forward, but gifted and talented as it sits today?
What is the criteria for being selected, pursuant to be selected to this program?
I'm not sure it's a selection. I think it's a criteria, but go ahead.
It's usually data that usually drives that decision. And it can be teachers, because it can be leadership, it can be, it's a talent development is really a big part of what it is, so you can have musical talents, art, it's not just all academic.
Thank you.
And she does send her apologies. She's actually on her way to the cities for training for Talented and Gifted.
Okay, thank you.
On to minutes. Is there a motion to approve the prior meeting minutes of May 12, 2025? Move. Motion made by Mr. Millian, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Troxel, discussion. Mr. Millian?
Aye.
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 Aye. And is there a motion to approve the prior meeting minutes of May 27, 2025? So move. Motion made by Mr. Millian, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Sharp, discussion. Mrs. Sharp?
Aye.
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 On to financial items, the approval of statement of cash invoices.
I move we approve the statement of cash dated June 2, 2025, and approve the community first bank general checking account checks number 87161-87345, ACH number 242503176-242503329, That total of $1,292,491.84. This is for the purpose of general operating costs of the district.
Motion was made by Mr. Miller, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Troxel. Mr. Bosworth is not here tonight, but Mr. Board, is there anything you would like to point out or add?
Nothing that I have any data on. I know that a board member asked about the CISA contract, and we will be bringing next year, next year's CISA contract to the board, so we'll provide some more information at that point. And if you have any specific questions, feel free to reach out to myself and Mr. Bosworth, and we'll get some answers for you. I apologize, Mr. Bosworth is not able to be here.
Discussion? Mr. Goudna?
Aye.
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 All right. Mrs. Coleman, consent agenda items?
Motion to approve. Motion to approve the consent agenda items is presented. Motion to accept the donation of eight photo rolls of paper valued at approximately $320 from Carrie Edgurley. Motion to accept the donation of eight basketballs valued at approximately $300 from Sleepy Hollow Buick. Motion to accept the donation of money valued at $115 from the Richland Hospital and Clinic. Motion to accept the donation of $2,000 from the Wisconsin Retired Educators Association Foundation. Motion to accept the donation of Girl Scout cookies valued at approximately $300 from Girl Scouts of Wisconsin Badgerland. Motion to waive policy 5851 and RCHS varsity baseball team to proceed with planning a trip over spring break in 2026. Motion to approve the budget revisions for the 2024-25 fiscal year is presented in accordance with the provisions of the Wisconsin Statute 65.95A. This shall require at least a two-thirds majority vote.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items? So move. Motion made by Mr. Goudna, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded, Ms. Troxel, discussion. Mr. Miller?
Aye.
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 Is there a motion to, oh, actually, on behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to thank Carrie Edgurley, Sleepy Hollow Buick, the Richland Hospital and Clinic, WREA Foundation, and the Girl Scouts of Wisconsin Badgerland for generous donations. Is there a motion to approve the modified agenda? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded, Ms. Troxel, discussion. Ms. Troxel?
Aye.
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 On to information and discussion items, district vacancies and appointments.
Okay, so you'll see all of the 25-26 vacancies and appointments. We've got a handful of support staff in co-curricular positions that'll be starting in August. We do have a few positions that are still open, specifically some alternative education teachers at both the intermediate school and the high school. That's part of the RC program. We're reviewing applicants and going through the interview process for some others. I don't typically highlight individual hires, but I do think there are a couple that I want to make sure that I do tonight. One is we have hired, and the board has accepted, and the person has accepted and signed the contract to become our new intermediate school principal. Felipe Armijo comes to us from the Wisconsin Dells School District with 21 years of principal experience, and so he will be starting as the intermediate school principal on July 1st. Lisa Brown, who resigned from that position, she was selected to be our board-certified behavioral analyst for our new High Thrive Alternative School held out in Rockbridge. So those two moves there, I think, are super important for our district. They both start on July 1st. And then another thing I wanted to point out to the board, because I had, somebody asked me last week, it feels like we have a lot of vacancies this year. We've hired 13 new teachers thus far. We have five more to go. We did have five new positions that we've added here, but I wanted to give the board some historical context to how does that relate? Just for the record, last year, we had to hire 26 teachers, and the year before that, 28, and the year before that, 37. Okay, so as we're looking to attract and retain teachers, the numbers do show that we are retaining teachers because we're filling less vacancies, and I think that that's, again, a celebration that our board and our public should be aware of, because sometimes they see a long list and they think, wow, that seems like a lot, but when we're an organization of 240 employees, we're bound to have, you know, hiring that's going on quite often. So I think that that's important. Any questions from the board that I can help assist with? Okay, thank you.
Board Development, Part 104, School Board Traps and Pitfalls.
Okay, so this agenda item, this is a mini-series that we're going to be kicking off here in the summer when it's a little late. Again, we've got some new board members, this is the perfect time to do this. Very similar to what Mr. Bosworth does in the fall with a financial piece. This will be an ongoing series for the board and our public to be aware of some of the things that the board can do, can't do, how does board development look, how does, what's the role and responsibility of a board, what are some legal constraints? There are kind of two phases that we're tackling here, kind of the technical side of being a board member, and that's where Mr. Strang is joining us here via Zoom. He's our district's general legal counsel. He's going to be joining us for the first session tonight, as well as the last session on July 28. And then we tentatively have Dr. Brad Seren. Dr. Seren is a superintendent at Sun Prairie, along with Dr. Steve Schroeder. He's one of the board members at Sun Prairie. They're going to be joining us in the middle two sessions, either in person or via Zoom, on more of the practical side, and what does it look like from a governance standpoint so that the board can hear from someone who has been in these situations, not only from a superintendent at a small, medium, and large school district, which Dr. Seren has, but also their board members. Okay? In addition, or kind of in conjunction with this, our Personnel Committee is also going to be exploring board governance models as part of their board development as well. So with that, I've kind of got an agenda on here. I'm going to get Mr. Strang and Ms. Siegler some co-hosting abilities and be able to share their screen. I did upload their presentation into the public access of the board documents, so that's available for you to follow along with. But the agenda that Mr. Strang will be hitting on tonight are kind of some traps and pitfalls that boards fall into, either individually or as a group. So if you can give me just a moment, I can't do this from here. Kirk and Rebecca, do you both have co-hosting ability, or is one speaking and one presenting, or?
Well, the way I'm going to be speaking, but based on the feedback you shared, Steve, we reordered some of the slides for the program this evening, and so we can either go off the material that Rebecca has on her system, or if you want to post what you have, we'll have you fast-forward a little bit with the slides that are there. So let's just see what we're looking at here right now.
Yeah, I have a little time to co-hosting, so you can share your screen. I think that's probably best.
Okay, and Rebecca, are you going to go ahead and advance the materials for us?
Yes, I now have, I am now sharing my screen and can advance the slides.
Okay, very good. Then we can go ahead and let me see what we have for Slide 1 to make sure we don't have to jump to number 15. No, we're in the right place. Okay. Well, thank you, Stephen. Good evening, everyone. What Steve had asked us to look at is some specific issues that can arise under the Open Meeting Law, but also more generally, under the authority of school board members and under the authority of the board as a whole. So what I'll be covering here to start off with, there are just a few open meetings, law myths, and facts, so that we can get kind of a flavor for what some of the more common misconceptions out there are. And then we're going to dive into some specific issues that the superintendent asked us to treat. They include what is a walking forum, and how do we contend with it? What is the individual board member authority versus the authority of the board as a whole? What do we mean when we say incompatibility of offices? We have discussion about that before. And then, if we have time, some of the basic mechanics of the Open Meeting Law in closed sessions. So let's start off with a couple of what I think of as commonplace myths that arise under the Open Meetings Law. One of them is the boilerplate problem. You see this really all over the state. We don't see it in Richland School District, because of course, we've worked to make sure it doesn't happen, but one of the most common things you'll see in terms of things that are habitual but not correct under the Open Meetings Law are a tendency to cite the statute and then to reiterate or recite the language that appears in the statute. That clearly is going to violate the Open Meetings Law unless there is also an individualized description of what the subject of the meeting is going to be. And that's true of open session and closed session. There will be a need to use perhaps more general or more careful language at times with closed session notices than with open session notices, but it still remains that there has to be a specific subject provided for a closed session. One of the examples that you used to see all over the state virtually as a carbon copy, you would see something that said that the board will entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to 1985-1C to talk about personnel and negotiations. And the same notice would print month after month after month. That would be an example of something the Attorney General would say violates the Open Meetings Law because we're simply referring to statutory language and the numbers and letters in the statute, but we're not saying anything about what we're going to talk about. And that really is going to be the test of any nervous, is if I'm a reasonable citizen and I look at the notice, can I get an understanding of what the board is going to talk about? And again, that is true of open session and closed session. Again, there may need to be a more guarded language used in a closed session, but still enough language to indicate to a reasonable number of the public why the board is going into closed and why the statute they're using to go into closed is the right one. Next, please, Rebecca. Another myth is that if there was some error made in noticing something for a closed session, that fallback is to simply take care of it in an open session. Actually, I see. Actually, I saw one of the largest school districts in Wisconsin do this a couple of years ago, where something wasn't properly noticed for closed session, and to my amazement, the council for that district said, well, then we're just going to have to take it up in open. And of course, when I was asked about it, I had to politely say, well, the problem is, it wasn't on the open session notice either. Open session notices also have to accurately provide information, and that fallback or stopgap myth that some believe in is exactly that, it's a myth. Everything in both an open and closed session is going to have to be properly noticed. So the open session is not a repository for things that didn't get noticed okay. Next, Rebecca. Another one we hear about from time to time is something called reporting out. I've been doing this a long time, and I don't know when it began, but it started before I started practicing in the area many years ago, that there was a belief that after a closed session, the board of education had to come back into open session and then had to give a recitation of what it did in closed. Of course, nothing of this sort exists in the statute, and in fact, that would be a recipe for potentially creating problems for any person who might have been the subject of a closed session, where confidentiality, for example, still could be at stake. There is no such requirement in the law. The board can go into closed session and can in fact adjur from closed session if that's how its notice reads. If a board does need to go into open session, however, to take further action, it can do so, and again, its notice has to provide that that's the case. So what about some of the problems that can come up that the superintendent asked us to touch on briefly in the 30 minutes we've got before we yield back to the chair? Next slide, please, Rebecca. One of the most common elements is the so-called walking forum. And to give you the basic dimensions of a walking forum, our Wisconsin Supreme Court has established that there are really two basic elements to it. One is that there has to be a purpose to engage in government business, whether that's by sending messages, discussion, whatever the case may be. There has to be a purpose to engage in government business. So if a board member were to send a note to another board member saying, how do you plan to vote on this tonight? That, of course, is government business. But if a board member sends a note to another board member saying, are you going to pick up the girls from soccer practice this week, or am I? Now, of course, we're away from government business, and that kind of information can be exchanged freely, but the key is, if it's government business, it counts. The other matter is that it has to involve enough members to determine the parent body's force of action. That can be a simple majority, but it can be less than that. For example, in a situation involving the renewal or non-renewal of a teacher contract, or in the hiring of a teacher, you have to have a majority voter of the board. When you have seven board members, that means four board members have to vote to hire or not renew a teacher's employment, no matter how many board members are in attendance. So on a seven-member board, four members must vote to hire. If you have a situation, however, for example, where a couple of board members are going to be absent, and everyone knows they're going to be absent, you're down to five board members. In that scenario, two board members are a negative majority, because two board members could get together and say, let's agree to vote no, because neither of us wants this person to work here. That would be an example of a negative forum, because two board members can determine the outcome for the entire board in that scenario. So it's not always a working majority or a simple majority. It can be less or different. The other factor, of course, in the walking forums, next slide, please, Rebecca, is that there's going to be a sequential property to it. In the old days, somebody would talk to another board member, then that board member would go talk to someone else, and before you know it, you have, of course, the walking forum, as the name implies. Today, of course, we have an additional, actually, two additional factors that come into play. One of them is, a lot of the communication nowadays will be written. It'll be through email, it will be through messaging, it's going to be through texting, other means of communicating besides the traditional walking forum, which literally involved people speaking to one another. The additional compelling factor that goes with that, of course, from the Attorney General's standpoint, is that those messages, those text messages, those emails, are public records. So of course, when we have a written walking forum, we not only have violation of the open meeting law, but the public records law preserves the evidence that that violation took place. So it's important to remember that any time we have exchange of opinion on government business, we run the risk that that is going to start a walking forum, and board members in good faith are going to be very careful to say to one another, let's not get too far into the business discussion without making sure that we don't share this with others, we bring this back to the board and have the board consider it as a whole, and use the board agenda-making process for an opportunity to hear the issue. But again, the purpose of outline walking forums is to make sure that meeting notices tell the public the whole story on what the board is considering and voting on. Next, please, Rebecca. And this is another factor with walking forum, of course, I mentioned electronic mail in my previous remark. That kind of gets the mechanics of this involved, because if you're the superintendent or board president, you have to be careful about this. So sometimes you have to, for example, when you're calling a special meeting of the board, the statute that we cited in the outline, you have to follow a particular procedure in order to schedule a special meeting, and that involves communication between the board president, the board clerk, and other board members. It's clear that there can be minimal communication for scheduling purposes, and that includes special meetings under 12011, too. Those communications are not going to be found in the walking forum if you're following the statute and communicating with one another in order to schedule a special meeting properly. So it is an exception, really, to the walking forum rule. Another thing is, is that when there's information distributed, sometimes from the superintendent, sometimes from me or others, it's important at times that the email instruct recipients to respond only to the sender and not reply at all to board members in certainly not to engender discussion away from the table that you're sitting at this evening. Next, please. Liability. Under the open meetings law, there is no such thing as district liability. It's always individual liability for individual elected officials, and so it does bear mentioning that if things went all the way through the process in our courts, if there were a finding that a board member violated the open meeting law, there could be a forfeiture of $25 to $300 under the current statutory authority. So again, the liability for violations falls on individuals and not the district, doesn't hold when we have a walking forum or any number of other potential violations of the open meetings law. What about board member authority? Next, Rebecca. This is something that comes up a lot, and certainly comes up a lot, when new board members come onto any school board, they familiarize themselves with the nature of board authority. Strictly speaking, individual school board members are individual citizens and not much more than that. They do have individual responsibility as well, serving on the board, but such as I mentioned in the outline, they are the custodian of their own public records. So every board member keeps their own records as an elected official, and then periodically they examine those records and determine what of the records that they have kept personally needs to be stored in the district's record retention system. All school districts have to have record retention practice under the public records law. All elected officials periodically have to provide those things that constitute public records to the district, so that those can be housed properly and not kept on individual systems as a way of making sure you preserve the records. So school board members do have their own responsibilities as individuals, but they don't have authority as individuals, and in fact, individual school board members do not have any special authority under the law unless they serve in a board office, in which case they have the authority in that office. Or in other situations, they will be somebody who is given authority by a school board. So if a board decides that a particular member is going to be their person to handle something with other vendors or other members of the public, then that person has been authorized, but it's because there was a vote in the board, not because they have that authority on their own. Next, please. One thing that can come up too is what level of access school board members have to records, and again, the answer is really not as individuals. It has to arise in the course of the office that they're executing. So for example, individual board members wouldn't have the authority to look at records of individual faculty members or students on their own authority. They wouldn't have the authority to direct the day-to-day operations, or work of staff or administrators. They would not have any special authority for right of access. So a school board member, for example, couldn't show up at a district facility with a clipboard and start walking around taking notes on how everyone is doing their job. All of those things we just mentioned are things that are not part of an individual board member's powers, and those powers, if any, are going to have to be granted by the full board to perform whatever function it is the board wants to vest an individual with the authority to perform. But most of the time, a school board is going to vest its officers with certain authorities, and after that, the authority of individual board members are going to be experienced when the board sits down to talk to one another and not at other times. Next, please. Did I hear something from the group? If not, I'll carry on, because I know we're pressed for time. Was there a question, Superintendent Board?
No, I believe we're just clearing our throat. Go ahead.
Okay. All right. One other thing we were asked to comment on is the incompatibility of offices, Doctor. And the Attorney General has pointed out that two offices can be incompatible if there is a conflict in interest or duties, so that you can't really discharge the duties of both offices. This doesn't have anything to do with being in the same place, in two different places, I should say, at the same time, but has to do with inconsistency in the functioning of the offices, and we're going to get into a little bit of that right away. Rebecca, next slide, please. The case that appears at the bottom of the page, the Attraude Beck case involving the city of Green Bay, is kind of our leading case from our Supreme Court on the issue. But what it points out is, one cannot both be the boss and the subordinate at the same time. So for example, if the individual is a school board member, they're going to be barred by the incompatibility of offices, Doctor, from performing almost any function of employment from the school district. And in fact, next slide, please, we've had legislation on this subject. In fact, a few years ago, any number of school districts were experiencing difficulties staffing all of their coaching positions and all of their bus drivers. And the legislature passed legislation stating that school board members could serve as volunteer coaches or volunteer bus drivers while they serve as school board members, and that was made as an express exception to the incompatibility of offices, Doctor. But of course, in making that an exception, the legislature certainly gave the impression that under the statute, if it isn't volunteer coaching and if it's not volunteer bus driving, it's not on the list. It isn't something that a member of the school board can volunteer to do on behalf of the district without violating the incompatibility of offices, Doctor. Now, there's a rule of reason here. Nobody is going to get in trouble for helping, you know, work a lemonade stand at a bake sale or something, but you're still going to have to bear in mind that actual positions are subject to this doctrine, and in fact, there are times that it can become even worse. For example, years ago, there was a mistaken belief that an individual, while sitting on a school board or a city council or some other local government office, if a job opened up, they could apply for that job and see if they got it. And then if they got the job, they could resign from their position on the board or city council or village board and take the position, and if they didn't get the job, they could remain on the board and govern. And the Attorney General and our court said, no, not only is that not okay, that's a felony. And the individual board member cannot even apply for a position while they sit as a board member, a paid position with the district. So this doctrine in simple circumstances can be very serious. Next, please. Again, a common sense approach is best. I mentioned, you know, handing out cookies and things of that nature, being perhaps if somebody volunteers for one evening to hand out programs or something of that nature. Generally, these small momentary one-offs are not going to get the attention of the Attorney General, but an actual position, yes, that's problematic to say the least. Next, please. I think before leaving the subject, I should say this. This can actually influence things like volunteering, and some of these things unfortunately are counterintuitive, at least in the minds of some, because for example, school board members serve on school boards because they care about schools and children and education. And so of course, being on a school board allows an individual to try to make the schools better and try to promote the cause of education. But there are things that unfortunately are incompatible, and one of them is volunteering in schools in ways that are not on the list of school bus driver or coach. It's not something that somebody can do without violating this doctrine if indeed it is a position with any regular reporting. Another thing to remember is, is that Another thing to remember is, is that, you know, kind of something that is a companion, but still something that is always going to be a concern to any school district is, school board membership won't give a greater right of access physically to the facilities in being a guest, an individual school board member, again, unless they've been given greater authority by the board or hold an office that carries greater authority, you know, is not going to have the run of the school. They're going to have to check in at offices and be approved for specific purposes like other citizens. And so really, one of the lessons and one of the takeaways is that individual board members have their authority as such when they sit down with others, when they're part of that collective group that we call the school board. Now I know I'm close to the end of my time, but I'll look to the panel and do you want me to review a couple of quick notes on closed session meeting notices?
Maybe it'd be a good opportunity, did the board have any questions? Make sure we get them answered on what has been covered, and if there aren't any, we'll let him continue, but if there are, make sure we get those addressed first.
I'd like to just clarify something if I could. Attorney Strang, I just want to make sure I'm understanding you correctly. So as a board member, if we would be asked to speak at a class or maybe help with a one-day fundraiser or, you know, contact the principals to visit the schools for a tour, that part is fine. But if we want to say we want to volunteer Monday through Friday from 10 to 3 on a daily basis, that would not be appropriate. Am I understanding you correctly?
Yes, I think the way you re-stated that in general is correct. If we start, you know, getting into details and hanging little facts here and there on those scenarios, it might change things, but the way you described it, I think is generally true.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, a couple mechanical points, and I'll get out of the board's way for the rest of your meeting. These are things that go with another subject that the superintendent wanted us to include in our materials. I will cover a total of five slides on this and I'll get out of your way. Meeting notices, we give 24 hours notice of any meeting. There is no publication requirement for regular school board meetings, but there is posting requirement, and notice has to be given no less than 24 hours before the meeting. There is an exception, and I've put it here. The exception is unless for good cause such notice is impossible or impractical. Well, going from impossible to impractical is quite a drop-off. But here's how I have tended to look at it. The emergency notice law is two hours notice. The statute says no less than two hours notice can be given. I tend to say, all right, we know 24 hours notice is required, we know that notice can be given with less advanced notice if that's impossible or impractical. I like to err on the side of saying, okay, if we wait 24 hours, what bad things are going to happen that justify having a closed session or any meeting for that matter on shorter notice? If we can't articulate a good reason why we need to go that fast, I think the Attorney General would say err on the side of giving 24 hours notice. One thing I regret having to share on that subject with board members is convenience is not a factor in determining whether greater notice was impossible or impractical. So sometimes you'll have a situation where everybody is all together and you hate to have to call them all back in the next night or the night after that. But that's convenience, and that's not going to be a factor the Attorney General will allow us to consider. So it is important to make sure not to forget something because we may not be able to simply wedge it in because everybody is there for the convenience of everybody who is there. Next please. As I mentioned before, there is a subject matter requirement. The subject has to be listed along with the proper statutory subsection for going into closed session, and that's what we're talking about here, is closed session. My approach is that when this notice is posted and we look at it on the wall of the QuickTrip or online, a reasonable person should be able to tell at least generally what the board is going to be up to. There is of course a reason for being in closed session, and that's confidentiality. So there is a recognition by the Attorney General that the subject matter can be identified, but not necessarily be something that is too detailed such that the purpose of the closed session is compromised. And that's kind of my standard. My standard for closed session notice is there's enough info for a reasonable person to know what the board's up to in closed session, but not so much information that the purpose of a closed session is compromised outright. An example of that is if the board were to say, we will go into closed session pursuant to 1985-1C to discuss personnel, not enough, a clear violation of the open meeting law. Go into closed session to, under 1985-1C, to discuss a possible contract non-renewal of a certified staff member, that's probably about right. It tells the public what the board is discussing without violating the confidentiality of any personal matter. If the board were to go on and list the name of that person, obviously that'd be too much. So you can't say, go into closed session to, under 1985-1C, to discuss Jane Doe's non-renewals. That middle balance is what you're looking for. Next please. And boilerplate notices, as I've indicated, are always going to be held to be in violation. So if it's rolling from 12, 18, 30 months and it's always the same notice, we know we have problems. The reason I cite the Buzzwell case in this slide is to point out that our Supreme Court has indicated that sometimes the facts of the case are going to change how much is needed in notice. One of the factors they pointed out is whether the subject is of particular public interest. If a board of education knows that a particular matter is of great public interest and that there are any number of members in the community who would want to at least come to the meeting or dial into the meeting in order to follow proceedings, then the notice has to be clear enough so those people are aware that's what's being talked about. So for example, if there were, at the start of the school year, a public controversy over bus routes and whether routes were getting to their designated bus stops who live in plus or minus five minutes that everybody hopes, and whether or not, you know, parents had to stay home late and all kinds of other problems that can go with having bus routes be far off schedule. If that were the big public controversy, a notice that simply said bus company contract would not be enough to put the public on notice, that if they're interested in what's going on with busing routes, to tune in or come to that particular meeting. So these factors do indicate that things like public interest, things like being able to give more detail that we chose not to do, or something that isn't routine, something that doesn't come up much where there's going to have to be specific notice to the public for the public to reasonably know that that could happen in a meeting. Those kinds of factors call for greater specificity in giving that notice. Next please. Here are a few closed session items that are properly noticed, can be held in closed. Discussing and voting on an individual administrator's compensation, that can happen in closed session. Holding a pupil expulsion hearing is always going to be a closed session matter. Holding a private conference for certified staff contract renewal, that will always be a closed session because the statute says it must be a private conference, uses the word private. So for that reason, it has to be held that way. This does not mean the minutes necessarily are going to be confidential forever, however. So these are proper subjects for a closed session, but sometimes the minutes of that closed session are going to be something that has to be disclosed very soon after the meeting itself. Point being, some things are confidential for a little while, but not forever. For example, item A, discussing the merits of someone's performance and arriving in a compensation result in closed session is appropriate. But once that result has been reached, how much the school district is paying its principal, its superintendent, any number of other people is not a secret. That's something that is available to the public and can be discovered. And the last one that I think we have time for is the next, and so I'll just cover it briefly. No, it's the next one after that. Thank you. One of the things that you'll hear quite a bit about is the imperative to vote in open session. No question whenever possibly a school board should vote in open session, and indeed, there are some things that have to be voted on in closed or in open session. Things like ratifying collective bargaining, by law, have to be done in open session. But another myth we run into from time to time, a myth frankly perpetrated by the Attorney General's guidance on the subject, is this notion that there's no such thing as voting in closed session. That is absolutely not true. Where that myth came from is our Supreme Court in the city's case reached the conclusion that voting is a logical end result of deliberation. And so our Supreme Court concluded that if a body is properly in closed session to discuss a matter, it can also properly vote in closed session on that matter unless there's a statute or principle that says they can't, unless there's something saying you must go in open and do it. But otherwise, if you're properly enclosed to talk about it, you can also vote on it in closed. That is how the Supreme Court ruled. However, in a later case ruled on by our Court of Appeals, the Court of Appeals made an unfortunate somewhat careless statement that you have to go back into open session to vote. Well, all this proved is that the law clerk working for the Court of Appeals at the time didn't really bother to research the issue well and didn't learn that the Supreme Court, the highest court in the state, had issued a contrary opinion earlier that the Court of Appeals was required to follow. Well, as you can imagine, sometimes there'll be a decision that isn't correct, but it's popular nevertheless. And so if you look at the guidance on the subject today, the guidance begrudgingly points out that the Supreme Court said that votes can occur in closed if they're properly discussed in closed, but this other case says you should go in open whenever you can in any way. So it is something where there's still a little bit of a push in that direction in spite of the fact that the law is otherwise. But of course, we generally are going to want to proceed in open session unless there is a valid legal reason for being in closed, at which point the government can properly proceed in closed. That's all I have within the time I was allotted. In fact, I barely got in under the wire for that, so I should stop right now and yield the floor back to the Superintendent and Board President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Strang. Very, very nice. Again, this was kind of the first of our four-part mini-series. I don't know if anyone has any specific questions right now for Mr. Strang before he exits. Otherwise, if you do have questions that come up throughout the course of any of these sessions that we have, please email me and we'll address them in open at the next meeting so that everybody is aware of what those questions are and what the answers are.
I just have one final thing, one final clarification. Just because a school board or a school district is allowing something, it doesn't necessarily mean that they're in compliance, correct?
Yeah, I don't think there'd be any way to say no to that because you're speaking very broadly, and I think the answer has to be equally broad that just because something is going on doesn't necessarily mean it's compliant. I think that's clear in almost any generality to that degree because of course, there's a lot of things people can be doing that aren't necessarily correct.
Thank you.
Okay, looking around and not seeing any other hands raised for questions. Again, I appreciate your time this evening, Mr. Strang and Ms. Stiebler, and we'll be in touch and we'll join again here in a few weeks.
All right. Thanks everyone, have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, on to action items under the revised agenda, revision of regularly scheduled meetings.
Yeah, first I apologize for my pause earlier when public notice was given. I was thinking we revised it. We did, I just couldn't find it. Everything was properly noticed, but this is the revision. And that is kind of in part because if you like this idea of having this four-part series on board development and what can boards do and what can't they do and doing that in open, we've got a tentative schedule on the 9B agenda item, but the only way that Dr. Seren and Dr. Steve Schrader could join us is because they have their district obligations on Monday nights, would be to move our next two meetings to Wednesdays. And so the proposal under this particular action item is to move our regularly scheduled board meeting from Monday, June 23rd to Wednesday, June 25th at 7:00 PM. And then our first meetings in July to flip-flop the Monday and Wednesday board and committee meetings and have the board meeting go on Wednesday, the 16th, starting at 7:00, and have the committees that would be scheduled for Wednesday, the 16th, move them to Monday, the 14th. So it wouldn't necessarily be any additional obligations for board members. It would be moving next meetings from Monday to Wednesday and then flipping committees and regularly scheduled board meeting in July before resuming again on 28th with our regularly scheduled board meeting. So if that's something the board is interested in doing and you kind of liked this little educational opportunity for both you and the public, I would recommend that we do that and get the folks that can come in. I just think there's an extra layer of credibility and transparency when we're bringing other people in from other, as opposed to somebody internally doing this. I think that's the big advantage of having the folks that have got recommended here. That's what we would be looking to take action on. Any questions? Okay, turn it over to Mr. Vion.
Thank you. All right. Overall, is the board good with making the changes, flip-flopping to accommodate guest speakers?
Yes.
I'm good.
All right, then we'll make, is there a motion to approve moving the regularly scheduled meetings to alternate days as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Motion to name a tranxil or a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Dowd, discussion?
Aye.
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 On to school board vacancy.
Okay, so with Board Member Van Landy's resignation from the Area 1 East at the May 27th board meeting, we do need to fill a vacancy. We have 60 days to do so, and so you will see, very similar to the last vacancy, We have 60 days to do so, and so you will see, very similar to the last vacancy that we had with Mrs. Dickman, who took a job with the district, Ms. Sharp is taking, got appointed to that position. I've got two timelines laid out there in the memo, and I had to have two because of the previous agenda items. If you were going to stay on the 14th, then we needed to interview prospective candidates on the 14th. But since you've now taken action to move the July 14th meeting to July 16th, the option that we'll be looking at in the memo is the top one, the one that's in rec. And so just walking through that timeline, we have the board member resign on the 27th. Tonight, we'd be looking to approve this timeline to fill the vacancy. We would advertise it in The Observer, as well as on social media, over the course of the next three weeks. Deadline for declaring candidacy, that form would be due back to district office at noon. Summer hours, the district office closes at noon on Friday, works extended hours during the week. And then we would interview the prospective candidates on Wednesday, July 16th, and if possible, or if ready, well, we could actually appoint and take the oath of office that same evening. And that would be kind of the plan that we would follow if the board saw approval. That would be my recommendation. Any questions? Okay.
Is there a motion to approve the timeline for the appointment of a candidate to fill the vacant Area 1 East seat on the board as presented?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Bialin. I'll second it. Discussion. Mr. Bialin?
Aye.
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 And CISA III Convention Representative.
Our last piece of action would be that at a reorganization meeting in April, Mr. Van Landy served as our CISA, Cooperative Education Service Agencies. We are part of CISA III, one of 12 CISAs in the state. They have a convention that's held on Tuesday, August 5th, at the CISA III headquarters in Fenimore, Wisconsin, starts at 6:00 p.m. Because Mr. Van Landy was elected to that position in April and is no longer on the board, the board does need to appoint or elect a new person to be that CISA III representative. And so hoping that we can get a nomination for a board member when the board president calls for that, and then either elect if more than one person is interested, or appoint through acclamation if it's just one person who's interested. But we do need a CISA III representative. I've added some information in the PDF that's attached that explains a little bit more detail with it, but essentially, it involves committing to be able to go down to Fenimore on Tuesday, August 5th, at 6:00 p.m. to attend that convention, and then vote on behalf of the regional school district. I guess I'll turn it back over to you then, Mr. Viall.
All right. So folks can either self-nominate or nominate somebody else, someone can refer somebody to nominate or self-nominate for the CISA III Convention Representative.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Sharp.
Excellent. All right. The nominations are closed, and... Are there any more nominations for CISA III Convention Representative? The nominations are closed, and Sharp has CISA III Convention Representative by acclamation. Congratulations.
Thank you.
With that, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Troxel, discussion? Mrs. Sharp?
Aye.
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 Thank you.